My population does.
Does, yeah.
The guy's thinking, uh, how do I get around this?
Yeah.
It's not supposed to happen, but it does.
Yeah.
It's the reality.
I don't think he's gonna be on it. I think he's taking care of his wife. She got the COVID. That's what Jacob said.
Mr. Secretary, I do have 7:00 PM. We go to Abby?
Yeah, should we start with roll call?
Um, yeah, you can gavel in and then she can do roll call.
Okay. At this time, I'd like to, uh, start the meeting. I'd like to, uh, welcome to St. Louis, welcome to the St. Louis County Planning Commission Public Hearing. Uh, the meeting is for the purpose of hearing presentations on petitions for rezoning or requests for special procedure permits. So can we take a roll at this time?
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Uh, I am Keith Taylor, Secretary of the Commission. In addition to the other members of the Planning Commission, I would like to introduce to my right Jacob Trimble, Director of Planning and the planners assigned to the tonight's petition. I hope you've picked up a copy of the public hearing guidelines brochure and tonight's public hearing notice, which are on the table just outside the door. The brochure describes the formal, the format we will use for the meeting and the agenda list, the order in which we will hear the petitions. If you wish to speak, please fill out a speaker attendance card indicating the petition you are here for. If you speak, please give your card to me as you approach the podium. If you do not choose to speak, please put your card on the table at the exit to the chambers. The card includes a QR code that you can scan to subscribe to the Planning Commission's agenda. By doing this, you will be able to access a copy of the Commission's report when it goes to the county council. The Commission will not make a decision on petitions heard this evening. Normally, the Commission will receive staff reports and make a decision on tonight's petition at the next executive meeting on March 4th, 2024. Additional comments, letters, and petitions submitted to the Department of Planning within one week of this meeting will be distributed to the planning commissioners in their executive meeting agenda packet. Written comment can be sent via email to planning@stlouiscountymo.gov. If additional information is required, the decision may be delayed. The Planning Commission's recommendations will then be forwarded to the St. Louis County Council, who has the responsibility for the final decision. The meeting will observe the following guidelines. Planning staff will introduce the petition and show photos of the site. Then the petitioner will present the request. They will be allowed, allotted 15 minutes. Then persons in favor of their quest will speak. After that, persons in oppositions or with concern. Persons, persons speaking as an individual will be allowed two minutes. Persons representing groups will be allowed five minutes. Please keep your remarks brief and avoid repetitive or second, seconding presentations. After all, opposition speakers have spoken. The petitioner will be allowed five minutes to answer questions and points raised by other speakers. The Commission may ask questions of any speaker. After each petition is heard tonight, I will ask for a show of hands by persons in favor and op, in favor or in opposition with concern. This is not a vote and is not binding on the Commission or the county council. The purpose is to make the crowd count part of the record for each petition. The first petition heard tonight will be 01-24 St. Clair Ministries and Under Signs Ltd., C8, requesting to go to R3.
Good, good evening. PC 01-24 St. Clair Ministries and Under Signs Limited. Is a request for a change in zoning from C8 Plan Commercial District to R3 Residence District. This change in zoning is going to permit all uses in the R3 Residence District, but tonight, the proposed use is a church, worship center, and daycare on a tract size of 0.75 acres located at northeast side of New Horse Ferry Road, approximately 300 feet southeast of West Florissant Avenue. From the county context map, the subject site is located in the north county and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. And this is a larger area photograph that shows how the subject site is positioned among other land developments. This is the land use map. It shows that the predominant land use here are single-family homes in the R3 District, churches, and commercial developments in the planned district. The subject site was formerly used as an insurance office. This is to the east showing the public hearing notice. East showing the existing building on the site. This is to the east showing the existing fence. Not showing existing landscape and, um, the fence to the adjacent property. This is to the north showing the adjacent property. This is to the north along New Horse Ferry Road. This is to the west across New Horse Ferry Road, showing commercial developments and existing courts. This is to the west also showing, um, an unnamed road that gives access to the commercial development across New Horse Ferry. This is to the south along New Horse Ferry Road. And then, petition's presentation.
Next, could we have the presenter come up?
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm Mike Thompson, Thompson Design Group. I'm architect, uh, representing the church, St. Clair's Ministries. Uh, St. Clair Ministries has been in the shopping center across the street, across, uh, Horse Ferry Road, uh, since 1999. Uh, had a, had a space there and had a church there. Uh, they've recently purchased this property or within, within the last year. Uh, I noticed the, the picture that you showed, the overhead picture of the site, uh, still had the, uh, the old existing house on it. Uh, that hasn't been there for about six years or so. Um, which kind of brings us all up because the original C8 zoning that's currently on the site, uh, said, uh, it's done in, back in 2002, uh, said, uh, the people were gonna renovate that house to make it into offices, which they did and ran it as an insurance company, I guess, for, for a while. Uh, the only building left on the site now is, is that old garage. Uh, the house, uh, six or more years ago got torn down. I think a car ran into it and, um, yeah, they, they tore it down and so, so the C8 zoning is, is of course not, not possible anymore. There's not a house to renovate. So, uh, upon, uh, the staff's recommendation, uh, we requested an R3 zoning. The, the church also bought the, uh, adjacent property. That's why you see the, uh, how the church is, is planned there. Uh, it's on this one and the adjacent property has an R3 zoning currently on it. So, uh, it just seemed like the logical thing to make them both R3 or of course gonna remove the property line between the two and, and, uh, and hope to, uh, to build this, uh, hopefully starting later this year. Um, are there any questions?
Commissioners have any questions?
No, I think the, uh, you said the, the church was right across the street basically, uh, since 99?
Yes, in that, they have a space in that shopping center. It's across the street, yeah.
Okay. And they have plans to put a daycare in there also?
Yes, yeah, they currently run a, a daycare, uh, in the space, uh, in the shopping center, yeah.
Okay, I guess they gotta build a facility first because it's not there, but,
Right, right.
I guess that's it. That's, I don't have any questions at this time.
And just for the Commission's knowledge that if this were to be rezoned, um, subsequently, the property owner would go through the standard site development plan review process whereby they would, um, be required to meet their landscaping, lighting, and all requirements of the zoning ordinance. That would come in subsequent. Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, at, at this time, uh, do we have anybody that would like to, uh, speak in favor? Anybody want to speak in favor? Any group? Want to speak in favor? Okay. Um, do we have anybody that would like to speak in opposition? Please come up here.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Barbara Harris. I am on the Board of Trustees of the Seven Hills Subdivision that backs, this property backs against. The subdivision has been there for roughly 65 to 66 years. The entirety of the subdivision is ringed by commercial and single-family homes. And there are single-family homes that this property would butt up against. We did not get notification in terms of the card from the county until last week. Most of the people in the subdivision are not aware of what these plans are, which is one of the primary concerns that we have. The other concern that we have is that there are subdivisions or single-family homes. The property line butts right up against the back of this property. We are used to having commercial property there that shuts down at a certain time of day. Yes, that had been a insurance company there. There was a single family, a single, I'm sorry, a single insurance operator and they, I think it was says he said, um, run down by a car and it's been vacant for some time. Our concern was we did not get, and even on the agenda tonight, it does not indicate what the use is, the proposed use is. All the other, um, people that are going to be presenting have a proposed use on their segment. There is no proposed use. The first time I heard of what they were planning to do was just now when they spoke. And they're talking about changing it from a commercial zoning to a residential zoning, but yet they're talking about putting a church on there, which in our mind is commercial. So we're not really comfortable with what the plans are for this development. They said they've been across the street. There are so many properties along Horse Ferry that would also fit, whereas they wouldn't have to tear down and scrape the property because I would realize that's an expense. There's a place up where Steak and Shake used to be. There's a place, there are numerous places down the street, all up and down Horse Ferry that don't back to residential property. Our concern is it would disturb the comfort of the people who live in those properties that lie in the back of it. There, there are patios, there are backyards, all of that faces that property. So people coming and going all times of the day, whatever they're doing, it disturbs that, that comfort that people bought that property in expectation of it. Many of the people have lived there for many years. So we are concerned about this particular property being zoned as residential in what is a commercial usage that backs against a truly residential environment. Um, this is the first time I'm doing this, so I don't know if I'm doing it correctly. But that's, I'm reaching on behalf of the subdivision as a member of the Board of Trustees and we will challenge this in some kind of way if that becomes necessary, but we will follow it through, but we were just, just able to find out about it.
Sure, I can respond to a couple of the questions. So the request is to amend the zoning map to, to change this parcel from C8 to R3. And so if that were to occur and the county council is the ultimate body that would make that, that sort of makes that decision after this commission makes a recommendation, one way or the other. Is that all permitted uses in the R3 would then become available at this site. So R3 permitted uses are typically going to be things such as single-family detached homes. However, they also allow, um, places of worship and the rationale being is that places of worship, um, are typically found within residential areas and residential communities, um, in that they're, uh, the type of facility that we frequently see in our residential areas. So if this were to be, uh, changed to R3, um, churches would be a permitted use by right.
May I ask a question? We have a church, a large church up the street, Olivet. This is a small lot. That's, that's another concern. I don't know whether they said 10 square, 10,000 square feet. How big will the church be? Where will the parking be? What other usage other than worship will that church be? As he asked about the daycare, what other uses will be? It's a very relatively small plot of land for a 10,000 square foot church and then parking around it. We do understand that, like I said, we do have churches near there, but they set on a big lot, back lot of parking away from the resident. They do not back against. One sits right up the street, huge church. It backs against the park in our subdivision. And there's a stream in between, but it doesn't back up to someone's house. So I, I didn't know all that. Thank you for the explanation about the R3 or whatever. But I, that does not align my concern about the proximity
Sure.
of this church to these homes.
Please do feel free to call the planning department, um, tomorrow. Um, you can contact, um, you, you can contact anyone planning and we'll be happy to walk you through some of the, the procedures and just generally the zoning ordinance. If there was ever to be a permitted by right development at this site, it does have to meet, um, all landscaping and lighting requirements of St. Louis County. Um, you can see from what they've, what there was up on the screen is sort of a preliminary plan. This is an incomplete plan. This would not be, um, this would not be accepted as, as a, for a permitting set. Um, but this is generally how the petitioner is, is thinking they would use the site. But landscaping and lighting would be a very critical to any sort of development here.
And may I ask, and add one more thing?
I would, um, ask you, uh, we're gonna have the presenter come up for rebuttal so he can answer some of those questions right now.
One last thing. We just spent nine months getting a, um, petition cha, um, authorization to change our, uh, intentions and bylaws because we had a lot of people renting in the subdivision. And many of the homeowners were very concerned because they had different people living next to them year after year and that's not what they purchased their home for. And we just got that put through where we no longer allow renters and they, they are grandfather for two years and then we will no longer allow renters in that area. So we're trying to, again, calm the activity within the community and we're concerned that this just additionally adds more concern. Do I need to stay here?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Would presenter like to come up and for rebuttaling and, and, uh, answer some of those questions that she had?
Oh, as, as you said, yes, this is, this is at least a preliminary site plan, uh, something to start with that, uh, that we came up with. It's, it's in the ballpark of what we're talking about as far as the, the capacity of the church and the parking, which are, you know, uh, you, you get the capacity from, from how many parking spaces, that type of thing. Um, obviously, yes, this has got to go through civil engineering. All the drainage issues worked out with MST and, and all of that, of course, to, to meet the code, lighting, landscaping, all that type of thing. Uh, the church is, uh, is planning on putting a privacy fence. Or we were told by planning, we're not required to, but they said, yeah, they would like to put a privacy fence along the back, uh, probably PVC, uh, type site-proof fence, um, just to, to give the, uh, give the homeowner some more privacy. Of course, you have parking spaces there and headlights and that, uh, to that. Plus, of course, there'll be, uh, landscaping in that, a 10-foot buffer area there also separate out from the, uh, from, from the people living there.
Okay. Thank you.
What, what exactly is gonna go in this space?
Uh, it's, uh, well, like the plan shows here, it's a church. Um, they'll, during the week, they'll, will operate a daycare, uh, essentially just like they do in the shopping center right now. So, um, it's a, just, you know, church meets on Sunday type thing typically. Um, may, may have some youth meetings during the week or, or other meetings during the week, but, uh,
What is the typical membership of your church? I mean, how many people would attend a service, say, on a Sunday?
I think right now, uh, is about 300 or? Oh, okay. So it's probably about 240 or something like that to, to start out.
Would you have enough parking to accommodate 240 people?
Yes, the parking plan that you see there, which again, that hasn't gone through, uh, figuring out how all the drainage is gonna work and all that, so that, that will probably change. Uh, that will provide for about 550 people.
And what would your hours of operation be?
Well, typically at church, you know, it's gonna be Sunday morning, um, maybe,
I mean, the daycare, I mean, when, when will this property be in use? What are the hours?
Oh, as far as the daycare, I, I would guess, uh, is pretty much all day. I would assume, uh, uh, people are working and drop their kids off in the morning and pick them up in the afternoon.
Okay, and what days does the church have service other than Sunday?
Yeah, Sundays only right now.
You don't have like a Wednesday evening service?
Right, they don't right now.
Okay.
Any more questions? Uh, at this time, this hearing is, is over.
Okay.
Okay, the next. Oh, yeah, that's right. It's not over yet. We have a show of hands in favor of this petition? In favor? How many we have? One, two, three, four, five, six, um, we have six? And seven? And, uh, in opposition with concern? Two?
Two.
Okay. Now, now this petition is closed. At this time, we call the petition 02-24 Gregory J. Schaefer, a CUP, into a C2.
Good evening, Commissioners. PC 02-24, oop, how do I move this? Oh, here we go. Is a request for a conditional use permit in a C2 shopping district to permit the occupancy of a tattoo parlor. This is a 0.43 acre tract on the northwest corner of Gravois Road and New Hampshire Avenue. As you can see on this map, the site is in South County and on the aerial is bounded in red. This is a multi-tenant building and the proposed tattoo parlor would occupy a vacant unit within the building. Surrounding land use includes mostly single-family residences in the north and east. And as the Commission can see, Gravois Road is a commercial corridor. This is an image of the public hearing notice. In the front of the building, Gravois Road is behind me. This is looking west to the storefront and to the parking spaces. This is looking west at Gravois Road. This is looking east on Gravois Road. This is the view across Gravois. There's several single-family residences and other retail uses. This is a view of the back of the building where there's an addition, where there's additional parking and a sign. This is the view across New Hampshire Avenue towards a lawn care facility and storage unit. This is looking from the parking lot to the adjacent northern parcel. That is an apartment building. This is looking west to the adjacent commercial building. Also pictured are an existing light pole and trash enclosure in the parking lot on the site. This is a view of the back of the building. Of note, each tenant in the building has a separate back entrance. And finally, this is an image of the existing sign on the property on the southeast corner of the lot. This contains information on the tenants within the development.
At this time, could we have the petitioner come up for presentation, please?
Thank you. All right. Uh, thank you all for your, uh, having me here tonight. Uh, my name is Greg Schaefer. I've been a local tattoo artist for 16 years. Uh, during my career, I've assisted in opening several reputable and local shops around the area. Uh, I've gotten recognition for awards for my artistry. Also, I have not done this alone, or alone. Along my way, I've worked and trained with some of the best artists in the, uh, local business area. And it's afforded me the opportunity to not only learn, but to also mentor future tattoo artists, um, which has grown my passion and my connection to the industry that way. Uh, my latest passion within the industry has drawn me to permanent makeup and mastectomy tattooing, which is the art of like beautician makeup and also like doing permanent nipples for women who have had breast cancer surgeries and things of that nature. Uh, also getting into working with people who have survived sex trafficking incidences and helping cover up brandings and scars that people have from being trafficked. Um, this is part of the industry that I've been passionate about for a while. Uh, the additional space would help me with my mentoring and help me expand on that. And also, you know, bring a technical artistry to this area. Uh, I wanna show you some of my work and give you an idea of the type of artist I am. I just kind of just look a little snippet about who I am as a person here. And then here is some work to see that I've done. And here is the proposed site plan for 9905C, which is on the lower half of the back half of that commercial lot that you guys were just seeing in that image. And the very back, there is a space for the permanent makeup and microblading and mastectomy tattooing, which would be separated by a wall. So it'd have its own private area. To the right of that would be a storage area for like medical supplies, gloves, all that, like everything we need to sterilize. Uh, to the left of that would be a tattoo station. Uh, that would be equipped with all stainless steel and everything that's required per county and state rules and regulations for tattooing and medical. To the right of that would be what's called a clean room, dirty room. That's where we sterilize and keep everything clean. One half is a biohazard area with a sink. The other half would be an auto play and a place to sterilize equipment. Adjacent to that wall would be an ADA compliant restroom, which is already in the works and becoming ADA compliant right now per, per the, uh, the leasy or the leaser. Um, next to that is the secondary station, which would be another tattoo station there, also retrofitted in the same manner. Uh, below that would be another station. And to the right of that, adjacent to the bathroom wall would be kind of like a little drawing area, kind of a reception area. There'd be a printer, a computer and everything there for reception and to make stencils for tattooing and. for tattooing and just keep everything kind of organized. In front of that is a half wall or what they consider a pony wall, which would be about four to five feet tall with a little closed separate entrance from the work area to the lobby. That way, there's no public access to that area where tattooing would be done, unless of course, obviously, you have an appointment or you're able to, you know, walk through that area. Per, I think, county regulation, you have to have that separated. And then the lobby would obviously have a couch or two and then a couple of display cases just displaying, you know, some oddities and interesting artwork. And the main signage would be on that front window of the actual location. So that is the site plan that we have presented for that particular location in the building. Do you guys have any questions for me?
Commissioners, do you have any questions?
I had just have a couple. So you would be running this location?
Yes.
Okay, and how many other locations do you have?
I have no other locations. I'm currently working out of another tattoo studio with a graduated business license, so.
I see, and then would you be hiring other people?
Yes, of course. And they would be doing the same thing where they'd get their own graduated business license, which means they'd be in charge of like their particular area. And that's how they would set up for themselves. And then everybody would be licensed through the county and through the state.
Hours of operation?
The shop I work at now is 11 to 8. I'd kind of be open to hearing what the county would recommend as far as hours go for that. Typically, that's what I work now is 11 to 8. I was thinking maybe a little bit earlier, maybe 10 to 7, just, you know, so we're out of there a little bit earlier in the evening. It's not disturbing in the local neighborhood. And it'd be mostly appointments, so there wouldn't be a lot of foot traffic going in and out of the space.
You plan to do anything to the exterior of the building?
No, per my lease agreement, the only exterior change would be just signage on the window. Everything else would remain the same for, you know, every place over there to have uniformity.
Dedicated parking for your unit? How many spots?
It would be in the lower half, so that's actually on the next, I can pop that up if you want me to or. Whenever you guys are ready. All right, so here's the site plan for the entire building, which I think is 990C. And then, or 99, yeah, that's right. So the lower half has parking. I think there's, can't really tell from here, but there's additional parking in the lower half. Typically, there'd be no more than like three people in there at a time usually, customer-wise. And then there'd be plenty of parking for that because there's other vacant spots in the bottom, so. You're welcome.
Do you have anything else you want to show us?
That was about it on the site plans. I had kind of a mood board to kind of show you guys like kind of like an interior idea. That's up to you guys if you want to see that or not.
If you had her on here, yes.
So the kind of theme of the place would be kind of more of a lounge area where people come in and they feel more comfortable. A lot of tattoo studios, when you walk in there, kind of feel dark and dingy and have a lot of artwork on the wall that's like tattoo-related artwork, but this would feel more like kind of like a spa experience. So also circus, like early 1900s and 1800s circus is where tattooing in America comes from. Also from, you know, like people returning in the Navy and everything like that. So it'd just be paying homage to that early part of tattooing, which is like kind of the sideshows and freak shows of like the 1800s. So, but very clean, very, very inviting. And then that about wraps it up for that part. And I thank you guys for listening to me. I had kind of like a little closing thing to say to you guys, if you don't mind. My passion in life is assisting and helping others. I'm family-oriented. My son is two and his mother and I reside in Afton with our 13-year-old daughter. In my free time, I'm not only a member of Freemasonry, but a past master of George Washington Lodge Number 9, which is located over by LaGrange in South St. Louis. I'm also a chapter president of the local St. Louis Widow's Sons, which is a Masonic writing organization. With that, we do a lot of charity with the Moolah Circus and the Moolah Shriners. We also help with like Shriner events to help with the hospital and we raise money for that. We also work with a program called the Backpack Program through our lodge, which helps local kids like feed some, get some meals and allows kids to eat after school for families that might not have the means to feed their kid, pick non-perishables and things of that nature. We also work with a group called Annie's Hope, which is a local charity, which helps counseling children who have lost a parent or a loved one. And that's, you know, part of the passion that I want to bring with this business as well is that. So in closing, I want to thank you guys all for your time and support. The tattoo industry has brought a lot to my life. People have taken me on their journey of healing, closure, life changes, whatever brings, you know, whatever they bring to me. I've spent many of my years in the industry and now dream of owning my own place to kind of operate and carry that on to the next generation of tattooers. It's kind of a more respected art form at this point, so I just want to help push that and drive that forward and bring a little diversity to Afton. That's what I got, guys.
At this time, do we have anybody that'd like to speak in favor?
Good evening. My name is Jason Fector. I work for DECA Property Management. We manage the building for this proposed location. Just wanted to come tonight to say I've been working with Greg directly the past couple of months. He's a great individual, local person who wants to invest in the community that he lives in. So with, for myself and for DECA Property Management and the owners of this property, we are in full support with Greg in this propose.
Okay, thank you.
Any questions for me? Thank you.
At this time, do we have any, one more? Yeah, please come up.
Good evening. My name is Suzie White. I'm a Realtor. I represent Mr. Schaefer and his personal and investment needs when it comes to real estate. The main priority was to find him a spot that was going to allow him to give back to his community. He kept saying, I want to make sure that my tax money and my client's tax money goes into, back into our community. Him and I first met when my family physician recommended him as a tattoo artist. I found out that he worked on patients, cancer survival patients and mastectomy scar patients, which kind of hit home because I thought, okay, my mom needs help because she's rebuilding. So I started digging, started to get my own information on him, kind of took a look at what his background was, what his training was, and the amount of continuing education and medical training right alongside physicians was pretty incredible because you don't normally see that in your run-of-the-mill tattoo shops. So I'm really proud and really glad that we have a great artist that has trained so hard and that really wants to put tattooing on the correct end of the spectrum from where it's been. And it's also going to help in the neighborhood because we have had a lot of bad shops. We've had people that tattoo kids that'll just slap anything on anyone. And he doesn't do that. He interviews and he requests IDs. And again, he puts a lot of effort into his work, so there's something to be said for all of that. But anyhow, that's all I've got. I'm definitely for it and.
Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, esteemed members of the board. I also wanted to speak in favor of Mr. Schaefer and his shop. I've known Mr. Schaefer for a few years myself. And again, as others have mentioned, tattooing used to kind of be taboo, but it's really grown to a point now where it's an art form. Professionals across the spectrum have come to accept it. I'm a veteran myself, active law enforcement, and also work in IT at Mercy Healthcare Systems and all these industries. Tattooing has become an accepted form and they don't prohibit covering it up anymore. In addition to that, I think, as mentioned, Greg really wants to bring his tax dollars back to the community he works in. And in most cases, these artists are very well compensated, so it would be a great addition to the community here for some additional revenue as well. And of course, he's a stand-up man, so just wanted to put my good word in form as well.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak, opposition or concerned? Okay, at this time, can we have a show of hands of people that are in favor?
I counted you.
Anybody that would like to? Vote in opposition or concern? Okay, with, is that it?
Yeah.
With that, 02-24, hearing is over.
Good evening, petitioner, Commissioners. PC 03-24 Black Tree Association LLC is a request for a conditional use permit in the R5 Residence District and the Floodplain R5 Residence District for the proposed use of a private not-for-profit recreational land uses, including outdoor recreational sports field and associated lighted athletic fields for a track size of 14.12 acres. It is located on the northeast and southwest side of Mount Olive Road, approximately 260 feet west of Marchy Drive. As you can see from the county context map, this site is located in South County. And in the aerial to your right is the track. So the larger track tonight I will refer to as Track B and the smaller track I will refer to as Track A. Again, here's just a larger aerial of the site. As you can see, it is primarily surrounded by single-family homes. You have Grant's Trail located towards the highway and Gravois Creek, which runs through. Here's the land use map again. You can see the single-family homes. This is looking south onto Track A at the public hearing sign. This is looking into Track A, looking south. This is looking southeast inside Track A onto the neighboring R5 parcel. This is looking into the south back corner of Track A where you can see more residential parcels. This is looking west onto Gravois Creek in that Track A. This is looking west if you're standing in the middle of Mount Olive Road, where you can see the public right of way. This is looking east down Mount Olive Road. This is looking north onto Track B. This is that larger track that we're now looking at. And you can see the public hearing sign in this photo. This is looking east along that Track B. So we're just standing right along that gate. This is now inside Track B. And you can see to the northwest some movable storage sheds. This is looking north into the field of Track B. This is again, another air photo of the field in Track B, looking north. This is looking south at the back of the building that's existing on the site. This is south along the eastern property line. This is looking northeast in the catty corner to some of the residential parcels. This is looking east directly at the residential parcel right next door. And next we'll have the petitioner.
Perfect. Hi, my name is Carl Swarzen. I am a part of Ajax Sabre with Soccer Club. Actually joined the night with my partners. And just to kind of give you a little quick background on our club, we're a nonprofit soccer club, youth sports. We were founded in 2006 and we've been, I guess we specialize in really developing and kids of all kind of skill levels, kind of trying to develop players of all talent levels. And this is kind of how we came to this process. We were, we spent a lot of times renting and getting fields from high schools and we kind of came across this property. So I'll kind of flip through these slides. As we heard, there was two parts of this, of this property. There's a parking area and then there's a main field area. Our goal is, we purchased this in 2019, really, was to create improvements and to make this a better opportunity for our kids and our players. And our teams have a place to kind of call their own home. We spent a lot of time, as we purchased this in 2019, spending cleaning up debris, removing trees, kind of trying to get our field in good playing shape, making sure that it was a safe environment for kids to practice. And I will point out that this field at one time was owned by the Knights of Columbus. They probably owned the property for 40, 50-something years. And we're trying to continue that recreational sports field that they were doing. There's also a building on the property, as you saw in the pictures. That building can serve as a hall, serves as concessions, can serve as bathrooms, a place to kind of get out of the elements from the soccer standpoint. But it's a real opportunity for us to kind of make it a better place and create a more safe environment. There was definitely some issues with that, with the property. Our proposed improvements beyond the field and beyond the cleanup is to make some upgrades on the building itself. We're really simply looking to replace the patio that was in the back and there was an overhang that was falling apart. We pretty much had to take it down because of the falling debris and rain and the concrete was very uneven and unlevel. So we're looking to replace that patio. And I think that's kind of where we are here, bringing in, trying to get the conditional use permit. We want to replace the patio and we want to replace the overhang to make it a nicer place, a little bit bigger footprint where parents can get outside the elements, watch their kids play soccer. We also want to help replace some of the doors and kind of on that back north wall of the building, we want to add another set of doors that would open up to the field and kind of let the light into the building itself. In addition, we would like to, with the parking area, which I think was referred to as Lot A or Part A, we would want to create some kind of a drive pathway. This was used by the Knights of Columbus for parking, for events. This was an opportunity for anyone that was using the sports field or they were using the building or event halls where they could come and they can have a space to park. We're looking to add some drive pathways where it shows cars being able to come in the lot and be able to leave in an orderly fashion as well as create some parking stops. This is the site plan. You can see where the playing field is in a large area. Our fields actually sit to that back of that corner where the creek is. That was where the, probably the best, flattest, nicest grass that we had. We also included, we reseeded with some Bermuda, some Kentucky bluegrass. So really, that's kind of where the area of it is. It's a little further from the distance from our building, but it sits back there among those trees and in that creek line. And then you can see the parking lot, which is in Lot A. That would be, again, you can see the pathway where cars can come in and they can leave. We create about 75 parking spots total. That would allow enough coverage for us for kind of any event that would happen in the building or any kind of practice or game that would happen on the field. These are, I'm not an engineer, so I won't dive into that. Here's a better view. This is more of a Google Earth view, but this is our soccer fields themselves. As you can see, they sit further back and you can see some of the green. We have some softball areas that were there originally from the Knights of Columbus times. But we have spent a lot of time cleaning it up. The place looks 10 times better. You can see where the building is in reference to where our fields are. And then you can see the parking lot, which is just really cleaned up. That's all we've done with the property. Again, you know, it's about our club. This is really our mission statement. I'm not going to go into every word. I do want to point out the positive and fun atmosphere. It's in kind of quotations. That's our focus and that's one of the reasons why we want to make improvements to this building. Our goal is for these kids to have fun, to be able to have that club experience that other clubs offer. There's a lot of those big clubs that are out there. We're small. We're not, we're not trying to be the big boys on the block. We just want our families and our teams to be able to have the same amenities that other teams are enjoying and getting able to do. And we believe this is going to create that fun, positive atmosphere. Our organizational chart, I won't dive into that. But again, just like a little backgrounder, I kind of said in the beginning, you know, we were formed in 2006. It's really hard and difficult for clubs to stick around. There's a lot of. There's a lot of changing, a lot of moving parts. Uh, but we've been around, and we've been doing the same things. Uh, and we, we've stuck to our philosophy. Um, we probably have grown consistently. We're about twenty, twenty-five boys and girls soccer teams. Our ages are six to high school. So we've got the little guys, we've got the big guys. And then, uh, again, we're, we're trying to keep our club fees low. We're trying to offer the same amenities as the big clubs. I just included this because I thought this was worth. This is some of our impact that we're trying to bring back to the community. Um, we participate in all the same leagues that all the big clubs are, you know, the slice of the MISA, the National League organizations. Um, we're as a nonprofit, we're partnering with other nonprofits. Uh, the Judge Dowd League, we're partnering with New Dimensions. Again, this is all about youth development. Um, youth development, not just in soccer though, but also on and off the field. I mean, that's important to us. And again, that's why the, why we want to improve the building, because we know that that's where team meetings happens. That's where something special happens. The kids are off the field, they're talking with their friends. They have a place to gather. Coach gets to tell them a story or, or, you know, you, you grab a couple sodas or something together as a team. Um, again, we work with a lot of local high schools, and we partner with our neighbors. Uh, that's important to us. And I know our teams, a lot of times, will practice on those high school fields. Uh, we have a lot of sponsorships and advertising partnerships, uh, that help us maintain low cost, uh, to the field and reduce club expenditures. Uh, you know, we have a partnership with Adidas. Um, again, our youth development program, what we want to do on the field, and why we really like this place is because of the focus on skills training for these little guys and these kids growing up. Uh, we offer a juniors league program, and we're doing, we want to do training camps as well. Um, and then I just, I'm going to point this out because this is maybe a little bragging, but we're really proud of some of the fundraising events that we've, we've been able to, uh, do over the years. We've been able to waive over forty-five thousand in club fees for kids, keeping costs down low. Um, and we've been able to donate, uh, a good portion of money to our local parish. These really are just us. I'm, I'm, we're proud of what we've done to the field. These are actual good pictures of what we've, what we're doing with the grass. Uh, you can see the, the seed and it's coming in and some of the flat areas that we've upgraded. We've had to do a lot of cleaning, a lot of leveling. A lot of time spent, I will say that. I'm quite the gardener, um, landscaper. But that, this is again, is just more pictures. This is kind of some before and afters that just really shows exactly what we were looking at. You can see the growth in the tree line, where we had to go back four or five feet. We dug out and cleaned up all the debris and wired fencing. And then you can see the afters. And, uh, this is at Lot A. Uh, you can see where the first two pictures, uh, those show kind of what the debris was that we were dealing with. And we simply just cleaned it up. So, anyway, uh, that, that's my presentation. I appreciate the opportunity, uh, to be able to present and tonight. If you guys have any questions, I'm also joined with, uh, Greg Hayden, who's been helping me through this process. He's been a, a huge help through this whole process. So if I can answer or address any kind of questions or...
Any questions?
Yeah. Uh, good evening.
Yes.
What's the current use of the site? Are you holding practices, games, events there currently? Uh, and do you foresee putting up lights for night games and that sort of thing?
Actually, uh, yeah, that's a great question. Um, yes, we have continued to do what, uh... When we purchased the field in two thousand and nineteen, we had to honor some of the contracts that the Knights of Columbus had. They had a, an Indian ball league on there, a cork ball league. These were adult men, uh, adult softball. So we had to honor a couple of years of their contracts. But we were able to start getting some of our teams to do some extra practice times. Uh, they would practice there. They, uh, we've hosted games. We've hosted some, uh, small leagues, which are small-sided, four- and five-year-old leagues that, uh, the Judge Dowd League is a four- and five-year-old league. I don't know if there's a lot of soccer going on, but there's a lot of running around. And, and, uh, they, they tear up the grass actually more than, uh, the bigger guys. But, um, yeah, that's, so we've been trying to do that. Our teams do practice, uh, and have a place to play. That's not their primary place right now. We're, we're, we're really focused on using the high schools. Uh, but our goal is to make this more of a, a home for us, to have more practices, more games. Um, with regards to the question with the lights, um, I know that in the current, or well, the former, uh, conditional use permit, uh, the Knights of Columbus had the option and that wording in their document and their conditional use permit. We really want the same thing. If you want to do lights the right way, it's an expensive endeavor. Uh, it's not something that is on our immediate plate. Uh, but it's something that we want the option on, and we will continue to look into those options. If we did, that would be something we would definitely follow through with the county, uh, make sure that we're meeting all guidelines and, and any kind of requirements that would, 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 would work through that. I don't know if that answers your question.
No, it does. Is this a nine months out of the year, twelve months out of the year use type of, uh...
Program?
Program that you're trying to...
No, no, I'd like some time off. Uh, no, I would say that we do not have, um, practices or games or anything going on during the heart of the summer. Our seasons are two-part. There's a fall season, which probably starts in August, um, and probably ends in November. Then once, once the season starts hit, people go in, they do indoor soccers, and the leagues start to kind of close up. We close the field up just because we want the grass to rest, and we don't want people practicing on the, uh, on a wet field. Trust me, they, they, they try to get out there anytime they can. But in the spring, we start up probably March and go to June. So that we're talking about six months. You know, occasionally, we'll have some, uh, some camps or we'll try to, you know, maybe do like a weekend here or a weekend there to kind of spread that soccer opportunity. Uh, but, but that's kind of, kind of our thing. We try to, we try to be smart in how we schedule. We try to stagger if we're having games over the weekend. Uh, we try to stagger so there's no overlap, so that games are finishing up. They leave, and there's another team coming in at a later date. So that there's none of this, uh, I know a lot of, they back it up hour after hour after hour. We're trying to be smart about that and, and, and with our scheduling. Daylight savings, I wish would go away so we could have a little more daylight. But, um, and that would be one of the reasons why. We, we just want the kids to have a little bit longer or a better opportunity to, to practice, uh, in those opportunities with, uh, if we needed to do lights.
And how many cars do you envision, uh, the parking lot holding?
So the, the, uh, plan, uh, I'll go back to the site plan. There we go. So the, the site plan, you can kind of see the, the small diagram. The, the pathway would really be like, almost like a, I don't know if it's a circle or square, whatever you want to call it. You would pull in, kind of do a circle, and then come out. That would be about seventy-five spots, which we think would be adequate, uh, for what we're trying to do. Uh, that would include anything that, you know, someone was, had the hall or, you know, the, an event there at the building, or if they were holding a practice. Or, um, again, that comes into the part of let's wanting to reschedule and be smart about how we schedule things.
And that, last question, sorry. Uh, the existing one-story building, it, what, is that storage or is there actual events that are held there currently?
The main storage building is, it's an actual hall. Um, it was, uh, it's got a s... It's, uh, cinder block. It, it's a large, what we would call a hall. I know the Knights of Columbus use it for lots of different activities. They had birthday parties, uh, you name it. They had a lot of different events there. Uh, they rented the hall out. Um, it's got a large hall that would probably, I think, from a, a capacity, would fit about a hundred people. There's a bar, kitchen, um, and then there's a storage area in the back. And then there's bathrooms, the restrooms.
So like you plan to open it up for folks while they're there at the game? They could use...
Well, we, we do want to have the building be able to at least, uh, use it for the bathrooms, the restrooms, that's the most important thing. Uh, we do, would, would like to, you know, uh, sell waters and sodas and popcorn and, you know, all the things that kids want, the little candies and, uh, mom and dad don't want to buy. But, yeah, it's, that's, that's our primary focus. We also would like to use the, the hall event as a great team meeting opportunity. So our coaches can come in, they can have a chalk talk on the board. Uh, Nick, who does a lot of our soccer training, and, and he hosts a lot of our coaches' meetings. Uh, we have the hall there, and people talk about different ways of coaching and styles. And, you know, that's, that's, that's the goal. You know, sometimes, like, like I said, there, there might be, uh, an opportunity for a coach to get his team together. It's raining, and it's just maybe more of a, let's, let's have a, 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 a meeting of some sort.
Last question, but that's not currently happening? That's what you want to do?
That currently did happen with the Knights of Columbus, and that's something we have been, uh, kind of doing, or, you know, if we needed to, hosting meetings. So we're not, we are doing certain things, yes.
Okay.
Now, we're, we're just trying to continue what was already currently being done, but probably at a lo, smaller scale. Because I know that the Knights of Columbus, most of their events were adult-driven. Ours are kid-driven. I don't know, Greg, did I miss anything?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome. Thank you for the opportunity, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
At this time, is there anybody would like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in favor? Anybody like to speak in opposition or concern? Okay. If not, can we, uh, have a show of hands of people that are in favor? Are there any people that are in, uh, opposition or of concern? Zero. Okay, at this time, this hearing for petition zero-three dash twenty-four is closed. Next, we have, uh, zero-five dash twenty-four and zero-six dash twenty-four, VP two four four east LLC.
All right, good evening, commissioners. PC oh five and oh six dash twenty-four VP two forty-four east LLC. Sorry, I'm scrolling real quick. All right. It's, okay. PC oh five and oh six dash twenty-four VP two forty-four east LLC is a request for a change in zoning from C six Office and Research Services District to R six Residence District and a request for a planned environment unit in R six. This is a five-point-four-eight acre site on the northeast side of Thornhedge Drive and Valley Park Road, approximately one-hundred feet south of Highway forty-four. Of note, the preliminary site development plan will encompass both this parcel and the adjacent one in the city of Valley Park. As you can see on this map, the site is in Southwest County. And on the aerial, it is bounded in red. The larger area in purple is the entire proposed development. Commissioners may recall, the area within the city of Valley Park was previously the site of a now-defunct water park called Wet Willies. Surrounding land use includes single-family residences in the south. Along Highway forty-four and Highway one forty-one are commercial corridors. The darker black line delineates the borders of the city of Valley Park. Again, the entire proposed development is outlined in purple, and the shaded area is the subject of today's hearing. The entire outlined site was previously the subject of a change in zoning request in association with a proposed medical office space. Although this request was granted, the office was never developed, and this lot is currently a vacant wooded area. This is the view into the property. Valley Park Road is behind me, the lot is wooded throughout. This is a view of the interior to the north. There is a light pole visible in this photo. This is the view. Just kidding. Okay, it's starting to skip, no. Sorry. All right. This is the view across Valley Park Road. There are single-family residences similar in style and size down this road. All right. This is the view down Valley Park Road. And up in the other direction. Note that there is no curb on this side of the road. The next few images are from the eastern side of the property. This first one is the boundary between the lot and the adjacent parcel, which is in a PS Parks and Scenic District. The building scene is an accessory structure in the park. This is the view into the park from the east side. You can see the power lines in the image. There. All right. And this is the view of Valley Park Road from the southeast corner. And the final photos are from the western edge of the property. This is the view down Thornhedge Drive, a private road on the property. There are also power lines on this side. Across Thornhedge Drive is a single-family residential property. The driveway of this property exits onto Thornhedge Drive. Now we can hear from the petitioner.
Thank you.
Is it just the arrow?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Katie Peruca. I am here representing Mia Rose Holdings, um, with respect to our petition to rezone the property at one-nine-one-one Valley Park Road from its current designation of C six Office and Research District to R six Residential. Um, this property is located, I guess it's the northeast corner of Smyzer Station and Valley Park Road. I gave you the address. I could give you a legal or a locator number, but we all know the property. It's Wet Willies, and I'm sure we've all been there, if you're from St. Louis, a time or two as a child. We are, um, proposing R six Residential. Um, Mia Rose is owner under contract. We're under contract to purchase the property, looking to develop, um, multifamily apartments in this site. We have eighty-four units proposed, as we mentioned, as the introduction mentioned. This site is partially located in unincorporated St. Louis County, partially located in the city of Valley Park, kind of straddling the, the boundary, the jurisdictional boundary line. For purposes of tonight's discussion, we're just talking about the county parcel. And so on the county parcel, we're looking, um, to develop eighty-four, eighty-four-unit multifamily, um, apartments. And these apartments will be three stories and, um, the, uh, get to the zoning. The, um, three stories, the parking is, um, well over the required minimum of one-point-five spaces per unit. We are hitting two-point-two. And again, the eighty-four units is well below the maximum density of one-nineteen. Um, so we do feel that R six is, is the appropriate, um, and desired zoning classification. Although the PEU was, um, suggested, you know, it would be our preference that we would go straight R six. Mia Rose, just a little bit about the developer, is a local developer. They specialize in multifamily mixed-use developments, St. Louis County, St. Charles County. We've got projects in Arkansas, we've got projects in Indianapolis. Um, but for purposes of the subject property, um, probably, you know, the most, um, relevant and closest is just right across one forty-one. That forty-four West Luxury Living is a beautiful example of what Mia Rose does. And, and if you want to take a look at their product and what they do, you, you don't have to look very far. It's just right across one forty-one. This is, we have a couple versions of, this is the colored version of the site plan. I'll zoom in here so you can kind of get a sense of the layout again. We've got a thirty-six unit building, we've got a forty-eight unit building. There's a clubhouse, there will be a swimming pool that will be on the city side. Um, but the clubhouse is, is over on the county side. Um, so you can kind of get a sense of the layout there. And then we've got some elevations. I will flip through these in the interest of time quickly. Some sample floor plans, some sample interior finishes. And then this, these are clubhouse photos. More amenities from other similar projects. And then we also have some colored renderings. I do have, um, some folks from Mia Rose to answer any specific questions about the development. We also have Mike Faulkner with Sterling Engineering, and he can answer any specific questions with respect to the site plan, which we have, um, the site development plan, which we have on deck as well. So at this time, does anyone have any questions?
Any questions?
Can you, can you go back to the, um, sheet that shows how far the buildings will be from the neighboring homes?
Absolutely, let's... This one?
Are you the attorney?
I am an attorney, yes, mhm.
I guess, and maybe Mr. Faulkner needs to come up here and
Okay.
Answer these questions on the, on the green space.
I'll take your speaker card, Mr. Faulkner.
I'm sorry.
Your speaker card. Thank you.
Yeah, for the record, my name's Mike Faulkner. I'm vice president of Sterling Engineering Company, and be happy to answer any questions that you may have on this development.
Sandy, did you have a question?
No, I, I was just looking at the green space and just wondering how close it was to the neighboring residents.
That building, the buildings is closest to the neighbors there. Just to give you an idea, there's a fifty-foot right-of-way. We're proposing a twenty-foot common ground strip before we even get to the parking area. Then the parking itself is about sixty-four foot. And then the building itself is another fifteen foot behind that to the face of the building. To kind of give you an idea.
Would there be a fence?
I'm sorry?
Would there, would there, would there be a fence? Or would it just be green space, like between the home and the parking?
It, it'd just be green space. You're talking from the parking to the building will be green space. From the, the parking up to, in that twenty-foot common ground area, because this property is very challenged topographically, there'll be a small drop-off there, so there'll be a retaining wall. So there will be a fence along that wherever it exceeds the four foot in height. There'll be a fence there. But there'll be landscaping that will be done in that twenty-foot to help buffer the residents across the street.
And then just topographically speaking, so like building A, does that sit down from Valley Park Road?
Yes, it does.
It does?
Not much, but as Valley Park Road, as you're heading east, which would be on the right-hand side of the exhibit that you see there, the, the ground is actually rising a little bit. And this site actually falls down because it's, it's like more falling towards the northeast. And that's the reason why we have to have the retaining wall.
Any other questions?
So just for parking, people pulling in will not, their headlights are not going to be shining across the road into these residents on Valley Park Road.
Right. They'll, and they'll be enhanced landscaping along that to try and help mitigate that potential.
And, and what kind of lighting? I, I don't pay attention to the other apartment. I drive by that. What kind of lighting is this structure going to provide that would be new to the area that right now it's just looking at trees and nothing's there?
That I'd have to yield to the client. But I, there'll be the typical street lighting that will be normal for the parking itself. And I'm not sure whether there'll be any light packs on the structure itself. I didn't know if there was going to be any. Okay.
Just with the lighting, maybe you could address that because it seems like the home's right across the street from the drive going into the complex. I mean, since there's only one drive in, one drive out, all these, all these cars would come out the same drive, and that would be pointing directly to the residents across the street.
Well, we feel a majority of the traffic will be heading north through the Valley Park side because it will go out right there onto one oh nine.
Okay, so there's a, there's also an exit down right on one forty-one.
If I could.
Yeah, on the Valley Park side.
Yeah, on the Valley Park side, there's an exit there.
Hopefully I can get this without. So where do I point it at?
I don't think the laser pointer works.
Yeah, I don't think the laser pointer works. I think everybody can see.
We can see it.
Because there's another exhibit that shows, that really shows, takes off the aerial that will actually show.
Oh, you can click the clicker. It'll move to the other slides.
Yep. That one right there, I think you can see to the north of there, there's a drive. Right up where the clubhouse is, which is at the, the upper right or upper left corner there. That little building there, that's the clubhouse. The pool's right behind it. And there's a drive, as you can see, it kind of goes to the north, runs around a couple of other buildings at the north. And then as it runs along the northern boundary, that is where it will exit out towards Highway one forty-one. So the majority, we feel, the majority of the, the people entering and leaving this will be really headed towards the north, towards that intersection at one forty-one. Highway forty-four is just to the north of that.
So, so does that, does that come out at that, which is now a three-way stop sign?
Yes. There's, there's a signalized intersection there. Yes, sir.
Which, there's a light right there.
Yes.
Gotcha. Thank you.
Anybody else?
No, I guess I just want to comment and say there's still five buildings towards the front and two buildings towards the back.
Right.
So it would be a little hard for me to discern that they would go out the back, but I'm sure a lot of them will. I'm still just worried about all the lights on one drive with the houses across the street.
That's it?
Thank you.
At this time, do we have anybody that would like to speak in favor?
Thank you.
Hi, my name's Tom Keim. I live at Seven Baxter Lane, Chesterfield, Missouri. I'm the founder of Mia Rose Holdings. So clearly I am in favor of the project. Certainly, this is the kickoff of a very long process. So we've done fourteen developments since we've been in business for nine years. I anticipate this investment being close to $60 million at the completion. So we're just taking the first step at this point in time, just working on the zoning. So we certainly understand the details of the site planning, and we have done a lot of details already. We've been under contract on this project for well over a year. So there, there was a process of which there was an annexation conversation. We don't need to talk about that because we're here today and we're going to go through two zonings. We're going to go through the Valley Park process, and we're going to go through St. Louis County process. So, and we're working together to collaborate, you know, on how that process works all, all together. So frankly, I would prefer that there was no access onto Valley Park Road. So I'm really looking at that as like an emergency egress, going to be required by the fire. So we really do believe that the access off of Smizer Station will be the, will be the primary access point. As it relates to some of the lighting, I can kind of talk to that just a little bit. So typically, our buildings will have lighting within the breezeways just for residents to use it in the evening. We will have lights that are on the exterior of the breezeways that will shine up and down. So they're, and we'll have zero lot line parking lights. So there won't be any lighting that sheds beyond our, beyond our property. So we're very sensitive to that. So, and I'm, I'm used to folks in the area where we build that there's opposition, and we're used to having those conversations. So I know we've got a meeting set up, Jordan, February, when is? We've got a community outreach meeting, February twenty-second. So we're going to try to bring many of the neighbors in and try to address as many of those concerns as we possibly can. So we've negotiated with residents. We've put up fencing. We've addressed lighting. We've talked about, you know, the clientele, the residents that use our facilities. So it's just an open communication about, you know, the, the product that we're actually proposing actually already exists in Lake St. Louis. So on, on Highway forty, when you're heading west, it's called the Sullivan. So basically, we're looking to repeat that exact same product. So if anyone was concerned about, hey, I want to see what the interiors look like. I want to see what the parking, I want to see the garages. You know, we would certainly tour anyone through. You know, the, the planning commissioners, elected officials, other neighbors in the area. I think we've done a, a very fine job of working with the city. I think the city of Valley Park is, is here to support us tonight as well. Betty Faulkner was actually one of the aldermen that pushed us on forty-four West to even make improvements. She's like, I want this to be the best apartment complex, you know, we can possibly have. So, I mean, it was a year-long process going through that zoning and site planning. And, you know, we're, 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 we're not rigid. So, I mean, you're dealing with the investment committee. It's me. So we, I really make all the decisions on our side. So if we're going to give and take and all that, it's, it's, it's a fluid process, and I think we're very flexible. So, you know, we, this is just the first step of this. So there's going to be site planning and working with Jacob and the rest of the staff, and we appreciate the time everybody's put into that. So I'm, I'm here to answer any questions. And certainly, as Katie, as Katie represented, we do, we are the owner-operator of forty-four West. It's 204 units. I didn't know I needed to bring all the residents to raise their hand. I would have. So there'd probably be about 150 people that already live with us that I could certainly fill the chambers, but I don't think that's necessary. I think all of them love and enjoy the product that we, we provide. We spend a lot of time and, and investment on the interior of our units to provide a quality product that's well above what is normally known as an apartment rental-type community. So.
I do have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I think someone mentioned that you were, you also had considered a PEU instead of R six.
So this request is two requests. It is a request for a change in zoning to the zoning map from C six to R six, which allow, which would allow for residential units. And then the second request is a request for a PEU, the Planned Environment Unit Procedure. That is the procedure that would be layered on top of the change in zoning to the map where the commission and the council could then require some planned, planned requirements. So this is kind of like our planned commercial, planned industrial for residential. So this actually request before each night is both the change in zoning with the overlay for the PEU.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, we're big fans too of, you know, the additional landscaping and all those things that will make our property more attractive compared to others in the area. So like I mentioned, we're just flexible in those negotiations and the back and forth. And, you know, really try to bring forth something that's everybody can be proud of. So this is the first time I've done like a dual application. So this is kind of weird, like it's like dealing with the county, dealing with the city, and trying to make everybody happy. But, you know, it is what it is, and, and we're here to do that, so.
Two questions. One is during construction, are you going to be coming from the northern entrance? Or would you be coming in off of Valley, Valley Park Road?
We'll be coming in off the northern entrance. And, and I don't, I don't know how familiar you all are with the site. This is unequivocally, unequivocally the most difficult site to develop in all of St. Louis County.
That's why it's been sitting there for a while.
That's why it's been sitting there a long time. So it's going to take a lot of, there, I mean, it's, you're building on top of a mountain. There's a lot of rock, and there's a lot of utilities. And how to, we've already talked to the city about, you know, how do we excavate the rock to not, you know, you know, we don't want to blast, for example. So you have to be very accurate with the way that you put in your trenches and bore through the rock and things of that nature, and we're very sensitive. So, you know, we, we hear, so McBride is building on top of us at forty-four. And you will, boom, you know, what the hell was that? So I'm going to try to do everything I possibly can to avoid any of the blasting because that's just, it's, it's a little bit of a scary process, so. But if, if, if this, the city, you know, we talked to the city about this site specifically, and they were very supportive of what we've already done in the city limits. And they're like, if you can bring that level of quality again, there will be a, another phase of this. We're trying to aggressively now put about three, three more acres under contract. It's all in the city, on the city side, and would all be retail, but would all sit there on Smizer Station. So it's kind of like, hey, we're willing to do the retail, and that's a benefit to the county. It's a benefit to the city, sales tax, all those things. But we also want to bring the density and bring the people, you know, that will also use the retail. So they kind of work in connection with one another. So if you Google Mia Rose, you'll see we're pretty connected with Sugar Fire. We're pretty connected with Emo's. We're the franchise holder of Maca Doodles. So we do, our, our bread and butter is multifamily developments, but the mixed-use concept and how that all works together in the right locations is really what we focus on, so.
And one more question. Beginning and construction time, rough estimate, you think, to where it would be once you break ground and then when you think you're completed?
Todd, normally, our developments usually take around eighteen months. This one's probably going to be a little longer on the front end with all the utilities and, and rocks. So I'm probably going to guess in that twenty-month, twenty-two-month range.
Okay, thank you.
But we want to develop it all together. So it's not like we want to develop something in the county and then develop something in the city. We want it to all be kind of approved and permitted all at the same time and kind of get it all taken care of.
Thank you.
What's the typical price of a unit?
Gary, that's a great question. You know, two years ago, our one-bedrooms were going for about twelve fifty a month, and our two-bedrooms were going for sixteen fifty. At forty-four West right now, our one-bedrooms are going for fifteen hundred a month, and our two-bedrooms are almost two thousand a month. So, I mean, the average income for us, the average income at forty-four West, so it's 204 units, where we've got about 100 leases. We're still not done with that project, so we're bringing the last set of units online. The average income that live with us there, our residents, is over 100,000 a year.
You should look into putting some out in Eureka.
We've tried. But, so, you know, I think the, the, the resident base, you know, that we're, we're, we're supporting at forty-four West would be the same resident base that we would support. We're calling this forty-four East. I mean, clearly east-west, right? So we think the residents, the clientele will be very, you know, be the same. But we also want, we want to differentiate the product type. So if you look at what we've done at forty-four West versus what we're proposing here, what we're proposing here is even a little bit higher end. So the units are slightly larger. The amenity package is, is a little bit better. Some of the finish, you got, you know, two-tone cabinets, backlit mirrors. I mean, just all those cool things. So we wanted.
Recouping the cost of development because I know what that ground was, what you had to dig through to pour concrete and all that.
I agree.
So much fill in, and it wasn't funny.
Well, and it was undocumented fill. So, you know, when you get into these sites, I mean, so I'm a civil engineer by education, but I have been developing for about 25 years. But, you know, getting into these really challenging sites is something we've, we've gotten pretty good at, so. But it takes everybody. It's not just us. I mean, it takes the support of, you know, the community. It takes the support of the jurisdictions that we're working in. Not only the city, the county, but the fire and, you know, everybody trying to figure this thing out. Because, I mean, it would be good to see that develop.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other folks that would like to speak in favor?
Thank you.
Mr. Secretary and Commissioner, my name is Tim Engelmeier. I am the city attorney for the city of Valley Park. I'm joined by one of our aldermen, Betty Hawker, who Mr. Keim had mentioned just a minute ago as one of the people that held his feet to the fire on an earlier development within the city. One that's going to be very similar to this, and also going to be very located close to this development, this proposed development. Mayor Shandra Webster, who's the mayor of our city, was slated to come here and express her support on behalf of the city. But she had another engagement that she had to attend to tonight, so she asked me to come and speak on behalf of her. My message from the mayor is short and sweet. The city wholeheartedly supports Mia Rose forty-four East proposed development that sits, that will sit in both St. Louis County and Valley Park. The proposed development sits on two jurisdictions. And you see the colored part, that's the part that sits in St. Louis County, but there is a section that sits well into, to Valley Park. And I don't believe the project can proceed without both St. Louis County and Valley Park being on board. While it is a, the reason why While, um, it is a, um, uh, the reason why Valley Park would support this and would, would take the time and effort to come in front of this commission is that we believe, um, this is a beneficial project for three different reasons. It's a mutual, mutually beneficial project that will enhance both St. Louis County and Valley Park. While it's beautiful, it's a beautiful part of St. Louis County and a beautiful part of Valley Park, it's an extremely difficult piece of property to develop. It has sat vacant for many, many years. I remember as a little, very little boy sliding down Wet Willies and I think that's the last time that I was there. There have been a lot of people that have come and gone over the years, but nobody has really stepped up and, and taken the initiative to try to do what Mia Rose and what Mr. Kymon's team is willing to take on and make something very nice out of this piece of property. I also would like to point out that I stand before you and the mayor, if she were here, would stand before you with firsthand knowledge of the applicant that's come before you tonight. You see, Mia Rose has already developed in our city. They're finishing up a mixed-use development just west of this proposed site. It sits along I forty-four in an area that's not dissimilar to this site. It's a very, it was a very difficult, um, site to develop. It also sat dormant for a long time, uh, for decades. What we now have, and it's not even finished yet, he still has parts of this that, 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 that he's gonna finish up, but what we have already is a thriving, a beautiful and a much-needed mixed-use development in our town. It's something that could also be in the place that's being proposed here tonight. In fact, um, we've had a lot of experience with, with this group and, um, I can tell you from our inspectors, the city inspectors, um, to our community development director, to the elected officials and to the residents of Valley Park, uh, Mr. Kymon and his team have been wonderful to deal with and that's something to be said for developers many times, uh, where we've, we've had just the opposite reaction when we've had developers come in. This was a team that was really a breath of fresh air to deal with from start to finish. They mean what they say and they follow through with what they say they're gonna do. They meet deadlines. Their communication with the city throughout forty-four West has been outstanding and I don't think you'll, you'll see, we will see anything different from this new, new development. And more importantly, their communication with the residents has been fantastic. Normally in developments in Valley Park, what we see is a tremendous amount of complaints, a tremendous amount of negative feedback, a tremendous amount of, hey, we've got mud coming off this area or their silt fences are falling, whatever it might be, we get numerous complaints. I'm not sure I heard a single complaint in the forty-four West development and that's something that's very impressive to us as a city. If something isn't right, which hasn't been necessarily with the general public, but if our inspector found something, they made it right and they made it right immediately. And I can promise you that we believe that they'll do it for this project as well. On behalf of the City of Valley Park, uh, I would stand here and I do stand here offering full support for this proposal, um, that is slated for forty-four East. If anyone has any questions, I'm happy to answer those as well.
I just got, don't know if it even matters with the, uh, or with the commission, but school district, how, is that broken up?
I'm not sure what school district, um, do we know off the top of, it's Rockwood's, uh, Valley Park does have both Rockwood and Valley Park School District within its city limits, but.
This is in Rockwood School District.
Okay, it's all Rockwood?
Okay, thank you.
I know forty-four West was, I believe, ro, a mix, was it Rockwood? Thank you. All right, thank you.
Anybody else would like to speak in favor? Anyone like to speak in opposition or concern? Please come on up.
Thank you.
Well, I live right across the street from that. I'm concerned with traffic, there's a lot of traffic now. There's young couples that walk their kids there, there's dogs there, there's joggers there, there's bicyclists there and it's crazy right, well, not crazy right now, but it has its times, it's crazy and by the time they get more people in there, not only is gonna be the residents, but there's also gonna be the visitors that are gonna come there. And according to that map, I know that the headlights are gonna hit people's houses. Yeah, I know they're gonna make money out of it, but I'm looking at the people who live there and, you know, you've been living there thirty, forty years, it's, it's tough to move, you know, and, uh, I, that's it, I'm, I see that there, I'm thinking about moving that, I mean, how do I move now, you know, I'm, I'm set, I'm set. Um, it's tough, isn't it? And when they were working on forty-four and one forty-one, there are people that had a problem with the construction going on as far as the water pipes leaking in their house, breaking up, you know, they've been sitting there since nineteen sixty-six, that concrete moved with the water line and my house as well was included in that, but, um, there's people that, I mean, if you take into consideration the people in that residence, I don't think anybody's gonna like it. I mean, one of the reasons I'm there too was the woods, I mean, the woods are nice, I mean, you know, we're looking for quality of life. You're not in the, you're in the city, but you're not in the city, you got the woods over there, it's just, we've got all the stresses in our life, you walk outside, that looks nice, man, it's woods, you got your deer over there, you know, it's nice, uh. It's a, it's a nice area right now, like I said, a little bit busy in traffic, but, I think that's gonna really change it a lot, I think it, this could definitely ruin some of the appeal for the people that have been living there forever and, uh, and it's tough to pack up. It's sad, that's gotta come down to, people even thinking they gotta pack up, um, so I'm, uh, I'm against it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please come on up.
Thank you.
My name is Jamie Overaro. My house is not directly across from here, but it's, we're that corner of the east side of it, my house is right there. Um, I bought the house, I'm from South City, born and raised South City, wanted to get out of the city, wanted to have a place where my kids couldn't run around, the park, the street, that's why I bought the place across the street, I bought the house, so there was a park across the street, so I didn't, I could look out, I got ten deer that hang out at my house every day. Those are the selfish things that I want to continue to have for my kids, they're all older now, they don't care, they all run away everywhere else. But the one thing I do see is young families still do the same thing, walk down that street. We call it the torto, uh, Valley Park of the spring because you'll have a hundred bicyclists flying up and down the street. Um, I'm also a linesman, um, I had a pole right where the entrance or exit for this would be, there's a pole there, it turns. One of our neighbors, uh, came home one night drunk, but he hit that turn, clipped that pole, killed the kid. It's right at that location, that location, this windy, it's two lanes, there's no streetlights on either side, it's a very big safety issue, you know? Seeing that with that kid, having to respond and I only live a couple houses down, it's hard, how much more of that, that's gonna be the only entrance or exit. I understand we say that, okay, we're gonna exit the, the north side of the, of the property or whatever, it's not gonna be lights in people's houses. You can't have one way in, one way out, you're gonna have to have two ways, so where's that other way going to be and can you tell that person, you can't leave to the south, you're gonna have to leave to the north. You're gonna have traffic coming in, shining lights in people's yards, you got a hundred and, what, eighty-four tenants that you're thinking of, it's eighty-three, hundred sixty-four, whatever it was. I just find this being a very big safety issue. That's really all I got, um, thank you. I know that this has happened one time before, it got turned down for pretty much the same issue, it's the street. Again, selfish, I wanted to have those deer across the street, I like watching the little kids play at the park and all that, that they build houses there, that's good, they're not building eighty-four houses there. The, the blasting that's gonna go on there, went on with one forty-one and forty-four, I never had, I needed some pub in my house, but I had to buy one right afterwards, 'cause of the foundation cracking and water tables and all kinds of engineering talk. I don't see how that's going to be prevented, man, that's my two cents, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have another speaker?
Thank you.
I'll try to be short, I know the Chiefs won the Super Bowl last night and we're all probably a little tired. I'm a, a young family, I know the two previous speakers are a little older, but I just moved into this, uh, area in twenty-twenty, bought my first house there, I'm not on Valley Park Road, I'm located on the street behind that, in the neighborhood. Excuse me, I got some notes here. Uh, Valley Park Road was built to service the houses along that and the small park, I think we beat the dead horse here, we don't believe the road can handle more traffic. Uh, I know there's wishful thinking that maybe they'll go down one forty-one, but the access on Valley Park takes you to the outer road, which takes you to forty-four, which, as we all know, is a main artery to the City of St. Louis and used pretty heavily. Another concern of mine is the additional wear and tear on the neighborhood streets in, uh, Bentley Manor and St. Bernard Hills, um, that I believe we'll see more wear and tear from people cutting through our neighborhood to get to these apartment complexes. Those streets are maintained by us, the Homeowners Association, so I believe that could potentially cost us more money. Uh, it is also my understanding that there are more than a thousand vacant family units right now, uh, within ten miles in any direction of the area. It's also my understanding that there are more than twenty thousand new multifamily units going up in St. Louis County in the next two years. I am all for new developments in St. Louis County, I would love for someone to develop the parcel that Wet Willie stood on, but I do not believe that these apartment complexes are the right use of the land and that's what I have to say.
Thank you.
Please come up.
Thank you.
Hi, I just moved onto this road, uh, this year with my family and one of the main reasons we moved there is be, oh, sorry.
You state your name.
Yeah, sorry, I'm Robin Kibby and I live on Valley Park Road. One of the main reasons we moved there is just it's a nice, quiet neighborhood and certainly like we love the natural scenery. I did write a letter, I think this particular parcel, like, I, I feel like it doesn't have a lot of transition to the neighborhood around it, we're zoned R three and this is like really high-intensity like development that looks like it should be more like in a commercial area, sorry. It's like, um, so I just hope while you're considering like a change of use, that you think about what is there right now and what it gives to the community that exists there and also really think about how to make a transition work to our neighborhood that's there, like with looking at the traffic. And, I mean, tonight's the first time I've seen this picture, so I actually didn't know what they were proposing, but I hope as you're looking at things, you'll think about like all the impacts to traffic on the highway, on the on-ramps and off-ramps and also through the neighborhood and also, um, evaluating what'll happen to that natural space and the, all the animals that live in there. Um, and really like public safety is probably like my number one concern, so I appreciate some of the issues you've raised and I hope you'll really think about the impacts on the neighborhood right next to that parcel and, um, how to soften the transition. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Uh, could we have the presenter come up and, 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 uh, answer some of the concerns that the people had out there?
Sure, and we appreciate and acknowledge all of the concerns and as Tom had mentioned, you know, Mia Rose is really very interested in working with the neighbors, we're sensitive to, you know, this is a big change. Um, I would just like to note, it's currently zoned C six, so, I mean, that permitted use is under C six, it's not gonna necessarily be green space. We've got, you know, office, research, laboratories, marijuana, testing facilities, daycares, adult daycares, you could really get, you know, some more commercial-like uses in there. I think the Mia Rose team was very thoughtful in the design of, um, you know, the aesthetic, the elevations. I was just talking to, uh, Jordan Dorsey about, you know, forty-four West is very kind of sleek, um, and has its own sort of vibe and, and look, this is more residential looking with pitched roofs. If I could kind of get to the renderings, you can kind of see, I mean, I think we were trying, the team was trying to make a, a transition and a softer transition, just well aware that we are, you know, kind of nestling in amongst, um, you know, existing established residential subdivisions, so, um, is there anybody else from our team that wants to respond to any of their concerns?
So, the resounding theme, what I heard, was the traffic concerns on, on Valley Park and so we're sensitive to that and if there's any possible way, so we're in for zoning, right? So, we're not necessarily in for site plan approval, so we've contemplated that there would be an access onto Valley Park. There are, there is another option that we may be able to consider, um, with the additional three acres, uh, you know, that we're trying to put under contract, but, you know, I, I can't commit to that, but what I can commit to is if there's any way to figure out a solution with these different parcels to keep any access off of Valley Park, we'll do that. I, I, I don't, you can take me for my word, but, um, um, I, I understand what the residents and our neighbors, uh, were saying, were, and I, and I hear that loud and clear, so I, if there's any way that I can figure that out with Mike, um, we'll certainly do that. So, I don't, I don't think that's what we're asking for tonight, we're not asking for, hey, here's where the roads go, here's where the access go, blah, 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 we're just asking for the zoning that would allow, you know, the eighty-four units, um, you know, to, to ultimately be developed in some way, shape or form, so.
I think it would put, uh, some minds at ease if you would go into a little bit about the blasting, 'cause I understood you to say you weren't gonna blast.
Yeah, we, 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 um, we haven't gotten the engineering team to confirm with a hundred percent confidence that we won't have to blast, but we're working down that path. You know, we also have commercial that is to our north as well, that, so, um, you know, some of the concerns, and I'm not gonna say, hey, forty-four West, when we built that, there wa, there was no blasting, so we were able to figure that out. McBride above us was doing the blasting, not us, so, um, we haven't blasted in and around this area. So, I'm, I'm not trying to shift the focus off of us, but, um, blasting is also extremely expensive, so if there is any way for us to not blast, that's what we're gonna prefer as well.
And I, and I assume you already know how the blasting works and, um, if a resident thinks that their home has been damaged, they call and have an inspection done on their foundation and that before, if they know that there's gonna be blasting, they come in and have the inspection done before the blasting and then they have it done after the blasting and then that determines if you're liable.
Yep, yeah, and we're still, you know, while we've been under contract for a while, we're still going through some of the geotech to really study the rock that actually exists there, to figure out, you know, how hard is the rock, is it breakable, is it ripable? Um, you know, there's different classifications of rock and determine whether it's, if it's too hard, it can't be ripped out and things of that nature, so. And then we also start to study like how deep the utilities go, 'cause that'll determine like, you know, your sewer line is your deepest line, right? So, we gotta figure out exactly, engineer that out to see how far down we've gotta go, so. Still things that all have to be worked out in the site planning and the engineering process, but, you know, I don't think we're there yet, we're just here asking for the zoning requests at this point. I think Katie was, was doing a fine job trying to communicate. I think Katie was, was doing a fine job trying to communicate, you know, what the zoning already is. So I think what we're here to say, hey, this is kind of a down zoning and a less intrusive zoning is what, you know, we believe, you know, multifamily versus, you know, commercial. And I think there was like a marijuana testing something or other that could, you know, go in there. So I'm sure the residents don't want.
I know it's premature, but I imagine at some point there'll be a traffic survey done, whether it's by the county or.
Oh, guaranteed. Yeah. We, we have not initiated a traffic study. We wanna get through the zoning process. Then we wanna get our site plan, you know, organized and then do the traffic study.
I'm just saying that for the benefit of the residents, that they know that.
Yeah, I mean, and, and to, to the safety concerns, I mean, the last thing we wanna do is develop a property that's also hard to get into and people are concerned about, you know, passing away from, you know, exiting or entering. So, you know, whatever we can do, I can't give you specifics of what that is tonight. But, you know, we certainly want a safe community as well as everyone else. So it would bring us no benefit to have something, you know, designed in a way that's not a safe condition. And so even if there, you know, if there's a widening there on Valley Park, you know, I started thinking about immediately about, you know, they start talking about the pedestrians and walking and everything, you know, like sidewalks on our side, doing the, doing the six-foot sidewalk versus the four-foot sidewalk and making it even wider and setting it back even farther. The only problem then I start to look at there is like, you know, we're, we can only control what is our site, right? So if the park doesn't have that, but then we have it and it goes our length of our site and then it stops again, you know, we can bring that value and hopefully kind of set the, set the tone for what future development may look like on the other sides, which we, we would commit to doing that. So, I mean, people in our neighborhoods, you know, our residents, I mean, they, they like to walk. They have dogs. They have families. They have all those things too. So it's, the, the, the safety concerns are resounding with us because there are concerns as well. So.
Okay. Thank you. At this time, can we have a show of hands of the folks that are in favor of this project?
Seven.
Okay. And the folks that are opposed or concerned?
Four.
Thank you. This time that this public hearing is closed. Adjourn the meeting.
No, we've still got, yeah, we've got this, this text amendment.
You're gonna present 04-24 St. Louis County Planning Commission. Please go ahead.
You can hand me that, their handouts, Abby. I'll put one for the record and this is, do you all want one?
You can only get a list of the speakers.
You can, if you'd like.
I want it.
Okay. They kinda skipped because they had some other, you can, this was their presentation. They provided also paper copies. If the commission would like to take one, we've got one for the record.
Good evening. I'm Abby Freudel from St. Louis County Planning, 41 South Central Clayton, Missouri 63105. And I'm here to present on behalf of PC 04-24 St. Louis County Planning Commission, which is a request to amend several sections of Chapter 1003, the zoning ordinance of St. Louis County revised ordinances. These sections include, but are not limited to, those regulations pertaining to accessory structures and uses, conditional use permits, site design criteria, facilities for local government use, and various definitions. Tonight, I would like to highlight several of the proposed changes that we are currently researching. First, we're looking at accessory uses and structures. The zoning ordinance establishes definitions for accessory uses and structures, and it contains lot coverage limitations in the residence districts. The zoning enforcement officer has further interpreted the zoning ordinance to limit the overall size of an individual detached accessory structure to 50% of the square footage of the primary structure and to limit the maximum total combined square footage of all detached accessory structures on a site to 1,000 square feet. These regulations pertain to detached accessory structures in the R districts. There are currently no size limitations for accessory structures in commercial or industrial districts. We are currently researching zoning ordinances of other jurisdictions and considering limitations on the number and height of detached accessory structures. We're considering regulations for temporary sales and construction trailers associated with new developments. We're also looking into types of accessory uses in order to clarify and specify our definitions. This is a list of specific definitions we are currently researching. Some of these terms are defined in our zoning ordinance, so we're looking for ways to clarify or otherwise improve those definitions. Others are new definitions. Some of the regulations we're researching are regulations on the number, the number and height of detached accessory structures and adding the zoning enforcement officer interpretation of the zoning ordinance, limiting the size of structures to the zoning ordinance itself. We are currently, we're considering regulations that will allow property owners the full use of their property while maintaining the residential character of the R districts. We're also researching and considering how to best regulate accessory storage in commercial district, commercial districts with the intention of preventing commercial storefronts from becoming warehouses. We are also looking into the conditional use permit procedure. Missouri State case law has transformed the conditional use permit process. Recently, the State Supreme Court sided with the city of Creve Coeur, which denied a CUP to a QuickTrip. The court found that the city could deny the CUP because their zoning ordinance states in the conditional use permit section, and I'm quoting here, "The city council reserves full authority and discretion to deny any request for a conditional use, including but not limited to, because it determines the use as proposed does not clearly meet one or more of the standards set forth." And so we're currently reviewing our criteria used to evaluate CUP requests and considering changes to those criteria. Next, we're looking into site design criteria. The zoning ordinance establishes the minimum criteria for landscaping, fencing, parking, and screening, which must be met by what we refer to as the straight zoning districts, which is anything that is not either in a planned district, a C8, an M3, or a mixed-use development district, or governed by a PEU or CUP. We're researching the site design criteria in other jurisdictions zoning ordinances and, and kind of best practices in the field, specifically looking at clarifying our definitions for yard and site proof. We're considering requirements for different fencing materials for different uses and zoning districts and considering adding regulations for trash enclosures, which are currently not included in the zoning ordinance. We're also researching and considering adding specific landscape buffer yard requirements for institutional uses, which are not currently included in the landscape section. Lastly, we're considering changes to the requirements for wheel stops and to the pervious pavement requirements. We are considering defining and recommending a regulatory environment for facilities dedicated to local government use. This is something that once was in the zoning ordinance and then was later removed. Currently, the zoning ordinance permits police and fire stations in all residence districts as they fit into the urban residence district goal of serving the social needs of the community. The department is looking into whether facilities for local government use, such as an outpost for the Problem's Property Unit to store materials and serve as kind of a break room for those employees that work in the field, whether they can be regulated in the same way as fire stations and police stations and appropriately sited in our districts. Next, we are looking at pet care and pet daycare facilities, which are a more common land use throughout the county and not currently accounted for. We're researching these uses to recommend definitions, create a clear hierarchy for pet care, pet daycare, and veterinary clinic based on the intensity of the use, and determine which zoning districts are appropriate for each use. Next, we're looking into the administration violations sections of the zoning ordinance and looking into clarifying the role of the zoning administrator and zoning enforcement officer. And finally, some miscellaneous items we're considering are moving all of the fees into the correct section of the zoning ordinance, correcting an error from the vehicle wash facility's text amendment, and researching filling for future development as a specific land use. So if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
What's the, what's the final work product gonna look like that you provide to the board members? Is it gonna be essentially like a red line of, oh, okay?
Yeah. So in, in March, hopefully, we'll have an information report, maybe not quite March. That's the goal. We'll have an information report that will contain our recommendations of amendments to the ordinance.
Yes, and I know it's a very dense, there's a lot going on in here. Really what it is, is it's kind of lots of little things that staff have over the years experienced over and over again. We're trying to put them all into a catch-all and do a hefty little text amendment to the zoning ordinance. So.
Great.
Yep. So then you'll close the public hearing?
Okay. Can I have a motion to close this meeting?
So moved.
Second motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
All right. Do we need to take a few minutes before we go into executive session?
Does anybody need to take a break here?
Okay.
There we go.
A nap.
I know. Public hearing went a little bit longer than I thought it would.
Are you gonna scan these and send them to us or?
We can either put it in a list form or.
I didn't know anybody to have that many presenters.
As Mia Rose? Yeah, I was, I didn't know that they would have all those folks. But, but yeah.
And the city of Valley Park.
Yeah, I, I mean, I knew that they were going through a simultaneous zoning, but I wasn't, I didn't know that they would have. I hope not terribly long.
Thank you.
I hope. It'll depend on how much conversation you all have.
Oh, come on. Don't threaten us.
With a good time? Why? You don't want.
You gonna pop that up on this?
Do we need to take roll again?
Okay. Sure, sure. All right.
Planning Commission Executive Session, February 12, 2024.
Mr. Taylor?
Here.
Mr. Cunningham?
Present.
Mr. Fagan?
Here.
Mr. Elliott?
I'm still here.
Ms. Hancock?
Here.
Mr. Bedell?
Here.
You have six. Okay. I believe you need to do meeting summaries.
Except meetings, except your meeting summaries.
Yes, I will. Can I have a motion to accept the meeting summaries?
Motion.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. New business?
All right, Abby, you'll.
Good evening. PC 323-23 Drontan is a request for a conditional use permit in the C2 Shopping District for a vehicle repair facility for automobiles on the 0.5 acres located at the west of Limi Ferry Road and Hickory House Lane. As the commissioners may recall, the subject site is located in the South County and to the right of the screen is the subject site outlined in red. Petitioners requesting a conditional use permit in the C2 Shopping District to develop a vehicle repair facility for automobiles. And vehicle repair facilities are not permitted by rights in all commercial districts, except in the C4 Shopping District. It's only permitted with a CUP in the C2, C3, and C7 Commercial District. So this is the preliminary site development plan shown at the public hearing. It shows the development of a new 3,750 square foot one-story building with six base lighting fixtures at the site entrance and the 15-foot landscape buffer, which is at the right of the screen. It also includes 22 parking spots and retains existing signage, trash enclosure, cop car on Limi Ferry and Hickory House Lane. They also show architectural elevations. However, the department identified several errors with the site plan that was shown at the site, at their public hearing. Of concern was the onsite circulation because the petitioner stated at the public hearing that it's not gonna be a drive-through building. So working with the department, we also, working with the department and the petitioners discovered that they do not have access to Hickory House Lane because it's a private road and the cop car on Limi Ferry is not up to standard. So the department wanted to see revisions about this and also requested for colorized elevations so that we can see embellishments, canopies, and other important information. So the revised site plan shows the same building, but is now shifted to the east, to the east side of the property line to allow for onsite circulation. And it also shows just one cop car now on Limi Ferry. And the cop car on Limi Ferry is going to comply with the MODOT standard. The, it also shows a two-way drive aisle on southwest portion of the site and reduce the parking spaces from 22 to 20, and the existing signage was going to be removed. The revised landscape plan shows a 15-foot wide buffer yard along the rear property line and Limi Ferry, and now shows a full buffer, 15-foot landscape buffer along the entire length of Hickory House Lane. The revised architectural elevations are now colorized, and it shows the structures clad in eaves toco and split-face CMO blocks in natural colors. It shows the charcoal-colored roll-up garage doors, awnings over main entrance, aluminum-clad in wall cap surrounding, surrounding top of all facet, and also wall-mounted lightings we proposed. Recommendation, staff is recommending approval because the conditional use permit procedure is appropriate mechanism to develop vehicle repair facility for automobiles and to ensure that the proposed development is developed in a manner that does not detriment surrounding uses. The request also meets the four-pronged conditional, conditional use permit test, and in this case, it is explained as with modification in place, the site development plan is consistent with good planning practice. The auto-oriented use is in keeping with other uses along Limi Ferry Road. The proposed use can be operated in a manner that is not detrimental to surrounding permitted developments, and conditions of development will ensure that the use is visually compatible with permitted uses in surrounding area. The developments and use are deemed desirable to preserve and promote public health, safety, and general welfare of St. Louis County. Some of the recommendations or modifications we'd like to see on the site development plans, more plantings are required on the west side of the building and along Limi Ferry Road and Hickory House Lane. Architectural review is recommended to ensure the project is visually appealing and not detrimental to the local area. In this case, we want to ensure that all sides of the structure shall be equally treated. The building shall be clad in higher-quality materials such as brick or stone. Architectural embellishments such as canopies or decorative, or decorative lighting shall be required, and any freestanding shelves shall be monuments in style.
Okay, this is time, do we have a motion of, for the approval? Recommendation, approval?
May move to approve with the conditions of development.
Second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
This is PC 138 St. Francis Development Company. It is a C8-planned commercial district. It's a 1.97-acre tract on the northwest corner of Lindbergh Boulevard and Old Halls Ferry Road. And they, this is coming to you, a request for an amendment to C8 ordinance 8,000, you as amended. Specifically, they're requesting amendments to the maximum size of the, of a convenience store.
Yes. I apologize for interrupting. We've had several matters now that have, weren't on the published notice for tonight's meeting, the meeting summaries, and this.
These weren't on the, these were not published on the agenda?
They were published on the agenda. Okay.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay, so this site is in North County, and you can see it highlighted there in red on the aerial. Timeline of this petition, so this was a request for a change of zoning from NU to C8 Planned Commercial District. This C8 ordinance governs two tract. The western tract at that time was proposed to be a muffler shop, and then the eastern tract was proposed to be developed with a service station and an accessory kiosk. The ordinance was amended in 2014 to allow for a general vehicle service center on the western tract instead of just a muffler shop. And then the ordinance was amended in 2021 to allow for a modern convenience store in association with the service station, the gas station. This is the Jamestown BP site. So previously, they'd only been permitted a kind of accessory kiosk, and they wanted to develop into a more modern convenience store. And so this ordinance allowed a 25,000-square-foot building. At that time, a site development plan was under review. However, review was terminated when the developer failed to resubmit a site development plan, and the developer reinitiated site development plan review in December 2023. They are currently requesting an amendment to allow for an even larger convenience store. Currently, the ordinance allows 2,500 square feet, and the, in the site development plan currently under review, the building is 2,657 square feet. They're showing seven parking spaces, and they're showing new landscaping along both street frontages. The department is recommending approval of this request. We find that it's a minor and reasonable increase in the building size. We find that an updated convenience store is desirable along this commercial corridor, and we note that there will be improvements to the site, specifically landscaping that is to be brought into conformance with the landscaping regulations of the zoning ordinance. So at this time, I would like to request a motion.
Do we have a motion for approval?
Make a motion for approval.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
You got much for discussion, are you?
Like to discuss that, all you get to do is say.
No, sir, I wouldn't.
Good evening, commissioners. This is PC 26-21 Dairy Maids, Inc. It is a C2 shopping district and FPC2 floodplain shopping district with a conditional use permit allowing for the operation of a vehicle repair facility. This is a 1.06-acre tract on the southwest corner of Halls Ferry and Capitol Drive. This is a request for an extension of time for the submission of a revised site development plan and for the commencement of substantial work or construction as required in CUP number 976. The site is in North County, and you can see it in the parcel, outlined in red on the aerial. For context, PC 26-21 Dairy Maids, Inc. was originally a request for CUP in C2 and FPC2 shopping districts for a vehicle repair facility. At the time, the site contained a vehicle service center authorized via CUP 195, which had existed prior to 1965. The site became vacant in 2020, and PC 26-21 was associated with proposed improvements to the existing buildings to reutilize the property. The Planning Commission found that the proposed use and design was appropriate for the location, and the commission granted CUP number 976 in January of 2022. However, the commission also recommended substantial revisions to the site plan seen at the public hearing. Per the CUP, a revised site development plan was required by June 15th, 2023. Since then, no site plan has been submitted by the original petitioner, and the site remained vacant. Tej Innovations LLC acquired this property in August of 2023. They have stated their intention to use the site as a vehicle service center. Thus, they are requesting an extension of time for the submission of a revised site development plan and for the commencement of substantial work or construction as required in the CUP. This is the preliminary site development plan seen at public hearing. The subject building is circled in red. The commissioners will note that this lot also contains other retail facilities. The presented site development plan has minimal proposed improvements. The commission recommended several improvements to the plan, and the applicant is willing to revise the preliminary site development plan to adhere to these conditions. The department recommends... Why does it only want to listen to me half the time? Okay. The department recommends approval of the request for an extension for both the submission of site, a site development plan and extension for commencement of substantial work. A vehicle service center is a permitted use under the CUP and continues to be an appropriate use on the site, and the current developer has indicated motivation to revise the preliminary, preliminary site development plan and begin construction. At this time, I would like to request a motion.
Do we have a, a motion?
Motion to extend for submission of revised site development plan to June 15th, 2025?
We have a second on that?
We're doing them individually?
It's a recommendation of all these four things?
Well, the two things, yeah.
Or the two things?
Yes, a second.
Any questions?
No, sir, thank you.
Just for clarity, we're giving them more time to not only develop it, but come up with new revisions that...
Right, so the, this, this commission granted that, that conditional use permit. And so, subsequent to that, the property owner did not, determined that they did not want to develop under the conditional use permit as, as it was, so now they've sold it, and the new, and the new property owners indicated they're willing to make the improvements as were required by the commission. So that's where, that's where the property currently stands. If there was, if the commission did not grant this extension of time, essentially, the, the property would have to go back to public hearing again. Just restart, start all over again.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it.
Thank you.
Next on the agenda?
We've got, I think, four site development plans. Do you want to look at them, take them individually or all together?
We'll just do them all together.
Okay. So, first was the comprehensive sign package for Corrie Zoo Academy, because this is an institutional use that has 20 or more acres. They can apply for the comprehensive sign package to have more signs. So this is the, the plan showing the location of all the signs on the site. The star is where the proposed sign is, which is a new monument sign at their entrance. The existing signs, and the proposed signage. This is an elevation of the proposed signage. And next is PC 24-23 Aldi, Inc., which is a C8-planned commercial district. It's 4.98 acres on the north, north of intersection of Old Tesson Ferry Road and Griffin Road and east of Tesson Ferry Road in South County. Here's the site plan showing the proposed structure, the landscaping plan, the lighting plan, and the architectural elevations. And then we had PC 43-66 Metropolitan Sewer District, which is a conditional use permit in the R5 Residence District and FPR5 Floodplain Residence District. It's a 72.71-acre tract on the southeast side of South Broadway Street, northeast of East Hoffmeister Avenue. There it is in South County. And here's the site development plan showing the new structure. And then lastly, we had PC 33-19 Afton Plaza JV LLC, which is a C8-planned commercial district. It's a 1.45-acre tract on the south side of Weber Road, east of Toby Avenue, I apologize, west of Toby Avenue, and east of Swifton Avenue. This is the, the Nine Mile Garden site in South County. There it goes. And they're showing new canopies on the site. And here's the elevations of those canopies. And so we are recommending approval of all of these.
What is the petition number for Corrie Zoo?
Oh, I apologize. I don't think it has a petition number. It does not have a petition number.
That's okay, you can, you can say for the comprehensive sign package for Corrie Zoo.
Sure. I make a motion that we accept the site plans for Corrie Zoo, PC 24-23, 43-66, and 33-19.
Second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it. Man.
I think that's, I think that's all the business for tonight.
I mean, uh...
Tell me how you really feel.
He's still on a journey, Jeremy, can I have a, a motion for that?
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Eyes have it for your adjournment. We're adjourned till when? Coming back here?
March 4th.
Adjourn till March 4th.
You did a great job.
Well, that's kind of...